Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. I welcome those that are in person, those joining us online today. I also want to acknowledge longtime B O C C secretaries Lisa Corr and Carol Colerhill. Good to see everybody. Really glad you guys are joining us today. When you walk in the door, you could have got a meeting agenda. We also want to encourage you to grab that. Just follow along so you can stay up to date with what we're working on here today. Also encourage you to go to sedgwickcounty.org. You can see all the supporting documents that we have access to. Everything the commissioners are studying on these topics, you'll have access to as well. Before we get started today, I think it's important that we just take a note, special thanks. Obviously, last few days from a weather standpoint have been pretty bad here in this community. And we want to just pause and give thanks to all those in Public Works, Lynn Packer, his team, all the work that they did, all those with facilities, Sedgwick County facilities, making sure that all of our public access buildings, sidewalks, everything was safe for people visiting, and all of our first responders in public safety. They were really busy the last 72 hours. So as a commission, we just want to pause and say thank you for all the work. That was long hours. You did a fantastic job in some really cold and miserable conditions. So we want to appreciate you guys and thank you for that. So why don't we do one more meeting and do it well? I will officially call to order the Board of County Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 8, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
In vacation to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. On the note of winter weather safety, I have Julie Simpson here from Emergency Management, and she's going to share a little bit more about what's going on.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Yes, I feel like we're in the middle of a snow globe right now. Great segue. We're going to talk a little bit about winter weather safety, just like we do for spring storms. We do have a lot to talk about with cold weather. Just want to talk a little bit about forecasting. Winter weather forecasting is a little bit trickier than it is for summertime storms. One degree difference in different layers of the atmosphere can be all the difference between rain, freezing rain, sleet, and snow. And we saw all of that this past weekend. So not going to get too much into the science, but just kind of, I want to give a shout out to our forecasters and meteorology community because they were spot on with this forecast. We had advance warning and we were able to prepare ahead of time as much as we could. But just kind of understanding a little bit about winter weather forecasting. Extreme cold is a big concern. Just talking a little bit about the difference between a watch and a warning. A watch just means conditions are favorable to expect cold weather. That's the time you want to start making preparations and looking at how much you are ready to experience cold. And cold warning means it is expected within the next 24 hours. We definitely saw also those this weekend as well. So really, we're planning for the impacts. What are the impacts during cold weather and winter weather? Increase in car accidents. We have a risk of hypothermia and frostbite, carbon monoxide poisoning, and even heart attacks from overexertion with shoveling snow and doing some of those heavy lifts, even picking up some tree debris and that kind of stuff. The power outages is the big thing also that we experienced during winter weather. We were fortunate, we had some power outages over this weekend, but they were short-lived, they were sporadic. So kudos to our utility companies for staying on it. They were very quick to respond to any power outages. Travel delays, stranded motorists, we saw all of that throughout the entire state. And other impacts, closed doors, gas stations, government offices, delayed emergency response, and then delayed delivery of supplies, medication, and equipment. So these are all the things that we want folks to prepare for during those watches, especially of how are we going to handle when these things do happen? Power outages, safety with heat sources, candles and space heaters are always a fire risk. So we want to make sure those aren't around flammable items. Generator safety, at least 20 feet away from doors, windows, and garages to avoid carbon monoxide poisoning. Always encourage carbon monoxide detectors as carbon monoxide is odorless, can't tell if there's exposure. And then checking on your neighbors. Once your family is saved, check on neighbors and the vulnerable, make sure they are okay. Cold impacts on vulnerable populations, newborns, elderly, those with chronic illness, those working outdoors, and unhoused are at higher risk from the dangers of extreme cold. So we definitely want to make sure that we're checking on our neighbors, friends, and families, and communicating and coordinating resources for those to get through these hard times. Dress in loose layers, cover exposed skin, limit your time outdoors, consume warm foods and drinks, but avoid caffeine and alcohol. And again, can't stress it enough to check on friends, family, and neighbors. Just a little bit about frostbite and hypothermia. Frostbite, signs and symptoms is redness and pain in the skin area may be the first sign. Could also be firm, waxy, and numbness in the skin. And then hypothermia is shivering, exhaustion, confusion. Infants could be low energy and bright red cold skin. If you know anyone or if you're experiencing any of those, seek medical attention. Get to a warm area. Again, warm up in layers with blankets and clothing. Remove wet clothing. Place the skin with frostbite in warm water, but not hot water. You don't want to rub frostbite. You don't want to immerse it in hot water. Just do it nice and warm. And then frostbite caution, do not use fireplaces or artificial heat sources for warming. Don't rub or put pressure on areas of frostbite. It, who, excuse me. Don't forget pets. Even with the natural fur coat, winter can be harsh on our animals. Some dogs love this kind of weather. My son's German Shepherd is rolling all over this cold and snow, living his best life right now. But keep them warm and dry, keep them indoors when possible, make sure they have plenty of food and water. And if they are outside, limit the outside time, and then clean their paws when bringing them inside if you can. And then if you're traveling, as we know, this past weekend, we were advised not to travel. But if you must travel, make sure you have an emergency supply kit in your car in case you do get stranded. Cell phone chargers, first aid kit, jumper cables. Make sure you have a full tank of gas. May want to put some sand or kitty litter in there so that can help you get traction if you slide off. Flashlight, make sure you have extra clothing, blankets, those kind of things. And then stay informed. Make sure you're staying in tune with local media, and they did a fantastic job this weekend, too, broadcasting what to expect and what the conditions were. But we have various weather apps. Our local media partners all have local apps, Red Cross, FEMA, and there's various free and subscription-based apps. Of course, Sedgwick County Emergency Management and the Sedgwick County Health Department, we have a lot of information on winter safety. And then Mass Notifications, the free sign up for Civic Ready to stay in tune to what's going on. And then our local Weather Service, weather.gov ICT. So lots to talk about, just wanted to kind of get some tips out there and stand for any questions you may have.
Well, Julie, thank you. Appreciate all the communication coming from your department. It's always very helpful, these times of year especially. That Mass Notification that hit, I think everybody's phones, kind of alerted everybody. It was loud and it caught everybody's attention. Did that come from the state or does that come from your department? How did that work?
This time it came from the state, and that's very rare. Very rarely do we have a statewide wireless emergency alert. Some folks got the warning more than once, I think three times for some folks. They had some lessons learned up at the state. But we do have that capability to do that locally if we do have a more localized event that we need to communicate with.
Okay, really good. Any questions for Julie? As always, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks again, Julie. With the weather kind of up in air the next couple of days, we just wanted to make sure and get that information out. Okay, Sedgwick County Environmental Resources is again providing several drop-off sites for Christmas tree recycling. After you've enjoyed your real Christmas tree this holiday season, take it to one of the many locations around Sedgwick County from now until January 23 to be converted into mulch. Visit sedgwickcounty.org for a list of drop-off locations. The iVoted sticker design competition hosted by the Sedgwick County Election Office is open to students in grades six through 12 to participate. The winning design will become the official iVoted sticker distributed to thousands of voters at polling locations and with advanced ballots throughout the 2025 electoral period. Don't miss the opportunity to submit an entry before February 28. Visit sedgwickcounty.org/elections to access the entry form and the template. We do have three events coming up over the next week. Just after this meeting, we are celebrating our outgoing Commissioners Lopez and Dennis with a reception. On Sunday, January 12, at 1:00 p.m., we will have our oath of office ceremony here at the Ruffin Auditorium with a reception to follow. And then next Wednesday, January 15, there will be a passing the gavel reception after the B O C C meeting to welcome the new chair and pro tem. Also at this meeting, the chairman will be announcing the 2024 Chairman Award recipient. And with that, I'll stand with for any questions.
Okay, great, Nicole. Appreciate all those announcements. Good news in Sedgwick County. Any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we're good, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
No one signed up for Public Agenda, so we'll move on. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of December 4, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, Items A, B, C, and D, all Commissioners were present at each of these meetings. So without objection, I'll go ahead and combine all these in one motion. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 4, 2024, December 11, 2024, December 16, 2024, and December 18, 2024.
A second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments, Item E, Resolution Reappointing Nancy Larson to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in Position 1.
Mr. Justin Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor. As Madam Clerk just read, this item is reappointing Nancy Larson to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee as recommended by Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd also like to combine this item with Item F, which is the same board, would be Chairman Beatty's appointment of Kelly Parks, or reappointment, I should say, to the same committee. Kelly Parks is a former Sedgwick County Commissioner as well. Both resolutions are in order, and the recommended action is to adopt those resolutions.
Okay, I have no objection to combining those. Commissioner Meister, would you like to make the motion?
Okay. Thank you for both these people. Nancy, thanks for agreeing to keep serving, and Mr. Parks as well.
Yeah.
Kelly, yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve both as presented.
Yeah, I second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, Resolution Reappointing Pastor Roosevelt De Shazer to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Much like the last item, I think it'd be okay to combine Items G and H. As Madam Clerk mentioned, Item G is reappointing Pastor Roosevelt De Shazer to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board as recommended by Commissioner Meitzner. Item H is a resolution reappointing Julia Craft to the same board by Commissioner Howe's recommendation. Recommended action would be to adopt both resolutions.
Okay, I have no objection with combining those motions. Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I want to say, I really appreciate Julia. She's been very faithful and been very great on this board, and she wants to continue. So would like to make a motion to approve the resolutions for Items G and H, appointing Pastor Roosevelt De Shazer as well as Julia Craft. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I will second that, and I want to thank Pastor De Shazer for agreeing to continue to serve. Appreciate it. So I will second the motion.
Really good. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business, Item I, Public Hearing and Consideration of a Resolution Regarding Proposed Special Assessments for Internal Improvement Projects in the County.
Okay. Mr. Lynn Packer's on his way over. See Garth coming over.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to fill in for Lynn. I know that he's probably very busy right now, so I'm not sure if he will...
I thought I saw him run in.
Is he coming? All right. I'll stretch for...
There he is.
Would you like to start? Okay. Appreciate it, Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Belde Counties Bond Council. There's two items for you today related to the special assessments for four different projects. As you may recall, back in December, you accepted the statement of final costs and set the date for a public hearing of today related to four different special assessment projects in the county, specifically Dry Creek Estates' street improvements, Drater Estates' addition street improvements, Stonewater Edition Phase 1 street improvements, and Stonewater Edition drainage improvements. Notice of the public hearing and the proposed final costs were sent to all of the property owners in those four different subdivisions, and it was also published in accordance with law. And so the items before you today, I would request that you open a public hearing, provide an opportunity for the public to provide any comment related to these four items. At the conclusion of the public hearing, there's also a resolution that I would request that you consider the adoption of. That resolution will formally assess those final costs against the properties in accordance with the original petitions and resolutions that started those projects. There will be an opportunity for the property owners to prepay in full or in part their special assessments. The final date for that prepayment that would be allowed would be February the 17. After that date, then any costs that have not been prepaid will be fully assessed over 15 years and will be paid, and the costs not so prepaid will be financed by the issuance of the county's general obligation bonds. So with that being said, I will stand for any questions, or if you have any questions for Mr. Packer.
Okay, wonderful. Before we open up the public hearing, Commissioners, any questions for Garth or for Lynn? Okay, seeing none, stand by, and we'll come back to you. So at this point in time, we want to open up the public hearing regarding these four specific projects and the special assessments. We welcome anyone who'd like to come to the podium and share during public hearing. Okay, make a second call. Would anybody like to come to the podium under the public hearing to discuss or make comments on these, any of these four specific projects? Okay, seeing none, we'll officially close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the bench. Commissioners, anything for Garth or for Lynn? Seeing none, Garth, next steps.
Next step would be the consideration of the approval of the resolution formally leaving the assessments for these four projects.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, I'll move to adopt the resolution on the four specific projects regarding the proposed special assessments. proposed special assessments on these four specific projects. You're good, Garth, for that? Okay, that's a motion?
A second.
We have a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, okay, very good, thank you on that one. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item J, resolution, the Sedgwick County Fire District One adoption of the 2024 International Fire Code and proposed amendments.
We're moving quick today, Fire Marshal. Come on, Brad.
I will try to keep pace. Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Manager Stoltz, Brad Crisp, Sedgwick County Fire District One Fire Marshal. I'm back here today to present, represent to you the 2024 International Fire Code and Amendment Package. The Fire District enforces standardized codes throughout Sedgwick County, and the codes are generally from the International Code Council. Their view is best practice as far as building and trades codes go at the national level, and of course, we follow that suit. We are currently enforcing the 2018 International Fire Code along with our local amendments, which apply specifically to our jurisdiction. Every three years, the ICC puts out a new set of code standards, and about every six years, Sedgwick County Fire District One and M A B C D and others review those codes and make recommendations for amendments for adoption. We started work early in 2024 to review the 2024 International Building Code first because we shared two very important chapters with them, Chapter Nine, Fire Protection Systems, and Chapter Ten, Means of Egress. We then transitioned into a review of the Fire Code, which is what I'm in front of you for today. This new code does provide for adequate fire protection of public safety, public health, and public welfare. It does not necessarily increase construction costs, nor does it restrict the use of new materials, products, or methods of construction, and it does not give preferential treatment to particular types or classes of materials, products, or methods of construction. So the steps that we have taken to get to this point is a full review with M A B C D and internal stakeholders, which included the Board of Code Standards and Appeals, our partners with Wichita Fire, as well as Derby, and then a whole host of industry professionals. We've been in front of our very own Fire Code Board of Appeals, Board of Standards and Appeals, as well as continued talks with members of WABA and the Wichita Area's Builders Association. We have yet to send this up to the State Fire Marshal's office, but will do so once I get your approval. We have presented this to our very own Steering Council, and of course, the Steering Council represents all the small cities within our jurisdiction, and then, of course, we're before you today. The overview is, I have a total of 85 amendments in this package, 47 of those are directly out of the Building Code or our Sedgwick County requirements. I have eliminated 29 of our antiquated amendments that we no longer need. Of the 85, 38 of those amendments are for simple clarification or to define an issue, 26 of those amendments are actually less restrictive than what is written in the code, 14 of those amendments are more restrictive, and I'll give you just a little bit more detail on those here in a moment, and seven of those amendments are actually state requirements as they pertain to fireworks and explosives. I do want to provide some clarification on permits and plans review fees for those areas that are outside of the taxing district of the Fire District, outside the taxing boundaries of the Fire District. We have asked to double those fees and those permits, so the examples I've given below are on the service drive in the Neniscaw Township, which is around Clearwater, a service drive inspection would go from $75 to $150, and if there was a plan review done, for example, in Grand River Township outside of Chenee, the multiplier would double, that's the same multiplier M A B C D uses for plans review, and $100,000 valued project would go from $120 to $240. This is the more restrictive list, Commissioners. All of these items, with the exception of one, are in, they're in force right now. These are longstanding amendments that we've had that are more restrictive, with the exception of Section 903 and the A2 list, which I'll speak specifically to here in a moment. So in Section 105 and open burning, we've reduced those distances to structures, and we've reduced the distance, or we've actually increased the distance to allow burning from 50 feet to 100 feet. Same thing in Section 307 and bonfires, where we identify what approved containers are, and we identified what approved materials are, and we've increased those distances to keep people's homes safe and their neighbor's homes and properties safe. Section 902, and this is something that hits home right now, requires protection for exterior riser rooms from freezing. It would require those exterior riser rooms to be maintained at a 40-degree level, and as these businesses start to thaw out over the next few days, they're going to find out why they would want to do that. Section 903 is the one exception that is a little more restrictive than the past, and that deals specifically with A2 structures. Think of venues, wedding venues out in the county where people go to get married or have parties. In the past, we've required them to either add additional exiting or a fire alarm because they are not able to install a sprinkler system because there's no water out there, or not water enough for a sprinkler system, and so moving forward, we'd like for them to add the third exit and have a manual fire alarm system. The other changes include window dimensions, which go from 30 inches by 30 inches to 30 inches by 48 inches. Section 912 requires enlarged lettering for signs and signage to identify fire department systems, and that requirement goes from a one-inch high lettering to four-inch high lettering so our firefighters can see those from the street. Section 5006 is for the parking of hazardous materials in neighborhoods. That section basically requires hazardous materials to be kept 500 feet away from heavily populated areas or residential areas. And then finally, in Section 5610, we see in fireworks and explosives, five changes, which again are long adopted changes that deal with illegal discharge, possession, seizure, and unlawful acts concerning fireworks and explosives. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and then ultimately, I would obviously recommend that you adopt the 2024 International Fire Code new proposed amendments.
Okay, great, thank you. Fire Marshal Chris, we've all been briefed on this, had some pretty substantial discussions. Before we open up public hearing, I want to bring it to the bench for the Commissioners for questions and comment, and for Justin, if you have anything you'd like to add as well.
Thank you, Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor, this is a very minor thing. I did want to note that the resolution that's in front of you on this item talks about the Sedgwick County Fire Code 2025 edition. In the backup materials, it's called 2024 edition, but obviously, the year has changed since it's drafted, so I think what I would say is that that is the Sedgwick County Fire Code 2025 edition, we can modify that in the document, but I just wanted to clarify for the sake of the approval of the resolution as a Fire Marshal.
So to be clear, when we adopt, we're adopting the 2025?
The 2025 Sedgwick County Fire Code.
Okay.
And that incorporates the 2024 International Fire Code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Received that. Okay, Commissioners, any questions? Okay, Fire Marshal, hang tight, real quick, we want to be able to open this up for a public hearing to the public. Is anyone from the public would like to come and address the Commission or provide comment on the 2025 International Fire Code? Going once. Anybody else? Anybody'd like to start? Okay, we'll officially close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the bench. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, I don't know if you've mentioned this or not, but we're doing this during the regular business today rather than the Fire District meeting, because this is a countywide policy, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I've always been a little bit nervous about regulations, I always like to review them and minimize them as much as possible. I view that regulations are almost always well-intentioned, but they tend to cost money, limit freedom, limit local decision power, things like that. So generally, I'm fairly anti-regulation, there's a lot of regulations in this. I would just want to say, I am going to vote for this today. I still think we need to continue to review our regulations and find if there's things we can do to reduce that, I guess, to trust our citizenry a little bit more, to make better decisions for themselves without having to regulate some things. But I'm very concerned about the affordable housing topic, and I think that, you know, this doesn't really impact housing so much today, this is really about a lot of other things. So, you know, I just want to share, I do have some concerns about the level of regulation that this includes, however, it's really not the stuff that I think that I can impact today, and I think just updating this is reasonable. You did a great job explaining everything, and I don't really have any questions right now, I just wanted to share that I do have concerns about regulations, but I am going to be voting for this today because I don't think this is substantial to making things more restrictive in Sedgwick County necessarily, it's really just updating the code language, clarifying some things, and the one thing you added, I think, is somewhat reasonable regarding the third exit, so that's not reason to vote no today, so. Just want to share that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be supporting this resolution.
Very good, Commissioner, Fire Marshal Chris, one question, I want to talk about the fees and the fee change for all of those cities and municipalities that are outside of the Fire District One taxing jurisdiction. Supportive of it, can you give some reasoning as to why we came to that conclusion?
Yes, yes, sir. So many of those jurisdictions have volunteer fire departments, and they may or may not have anybody who has the tools or the knowledge to be able to review a set of building plans or to identify where a fire hydrant may be installed or a service drive. So they've asked us to do that work for them, that's been in practice for a very long time, most of those processes go through the M A B C D application process, and we are asked to either go out and do the inspection or do the initial plans review on behalf of the jurisdiction. And so we thought that addressing those fees, because the folks that live in those particular areas do not pay the Fire District mill levy, they're not paying for that service other than paying for the fee, we thought it would be fair to charge them some additional costs to kind of spread that out and make it more fair to those who are paying Fire District mill levies.
Very good, appreciate that. A lot of work on this, quite some time, so we appreciate all the work you guys have put into this.
Sure.
Thank you, okay, Commissioners, any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will move to adopt the 2025 International Fire Code and approve the proposed amendments through the resolution.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, I just want to acknowledge, let me hear when we first got started, we were acknowledging some folks that were here with us today, but Ashley Coleman, the Mayor of Keachai is here, want to acknowledge that, and thank you for being here today. Keachai is a great partner in Sedgwick County. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, a resolution determining the visibility of and authorizing the creation of a benefit district in Sedgwick County, Kansas, making certain findings relating there to an authorizing and providing and the making of certain road improvements there in Silverleaf Acres.
Okay, Commissioners, we've all had some correspondence with our county engineer Lynn Packer, with Garth, and with our county manager. This is not ready for primetime yet, there's more discussion that needs to be taking place. So before we even get started in the discussion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to defer. Do I need to, Justin, do I need to have a date of deferring, or can we just motion to defer indefinitely?
In this case, I think indefinite defer will make sense, Chairman.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion to defer item K indefinitely.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, okay, thank you, we'll come back to that at a later date. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, DER 2024-00012, Metropolitan Area Planning Department, M A P D, application fee increase.
Okay, Scott Whedle, welcome.
Good morning. All right, Scott Whedle from the Planning Department, thank you very much for the opportunity to present today. So today, you're talking about the M A P D fees. A little bit of background about this is that the Planning Department was created through a partnership between the city and the county, and that resulted in an interlocal agreement that established the department and the planning commission. As part of that interlocal agreement, the funding for the Planning Department comes from the following sources, you can see listed here on the slide. Please note that the zoning enforcement division is unique from the rest of the Planning Department and is funded by a reimbursement from the county. Otherwise, it's a 50/50 contribution from the city and the county, and also fees for applications and cases. So those are the major three funding sources for the majority of the Planning Department, that includes everything except for the zoning enforcement division. Here's a graph that shows how the department is funded. It shows 2022, but it's very similar numbers for 2023. You can see the relative percentages of funding, and you can see that the yellow and the blue represent both the city and the county, which make up the majority of the funding sources for the Planning Department. In terms of previous fee increases, the most recent one occurred in 2018, and according to our records, it looks like it was approximately every two years prior to that that fee increases were considered. In the 2024 budget, so this was something that was discussed during the year 2023, 10% fee increase for planning cases was included and approved as part of the budgets for both the city and the county. Now, at that time, the fees were not actually implemented, and that's because those require separate approvals from both governing bodies, so approval from the city for the city fees, approval from the county for county fees. In terms of analysis, so looking at inflation, and there's a variety of ways to measure this, but looking at inflation between the years 2018 and 2023, we saw that inflation increased by nearly 20%, and this is based on information from the Fed out of Minneapolis. Here's a chart that shows the increase in inflation year by year. The blue represents the individual year, the orange represents the cumulative total through that series of years. In terms of processing costs for the Planning Department, we only want to look at costs associated with processing cases. This includes current plans and part of our administration division, it does not include advanced plans or the zoning enforcement division, and what we find is that our costs for processing cases range generally from 72% to 76% of our budget. In terms of cost recovery, so we have those costs to process the cases, we have the fees, how much does that cover, that's our cost recovery, so we can see that that has gradually increased from 21%, and has held steady at about 23% for the most recent years. And that cost recovery has gone up and remains stable during this time period, even though department costs have gone up, and I believe that that's largely because of increases in case activity, and also that the case numbers are reflecting cases where fees are charged. And so here's the case numbers of the cases that we've processed, you can see that there's been a little bit of up and down, but overall, it's trended up since 2019. In terms of the fees and cost recovery, so the 2024 budget included a Planning Department fee increase of 10%. With the 10% fee increase factored into the 2025 budget, the recovery rate would be 28%. The taxpayer general funds, both city and county combined, would subsidize 72% of the cost of processing cases. Without the fee increase, the recovery rate would be 23%, and the taxpayer general funds would subsidize 77% of the case processing costs. And again, just a quick note on this is that this item today is not to talk about increasing or decreasing the Planning Department budget, but really, this slide is the core of it, which is, it is only to discuss where the funding should come from, should it come from additional fees, or should it come from taxpayer subsidy? One of the questions we were asked during this process was how do we compare to other communities? So we've done that for both cities and counties. So regarding the current 2024 fees, we find that we're higher than other Kansas cities, we are lower than two cities in Oklahoma and similar to one of the cities in Nebraska. And again, this is just a survey that we did, checking out what their fees were. When we look at other counties in Kansas, we found that we are higher than four other counties in Kansas, that's Wyandotte, Johnson, Douglas, and Butler County. When we look at other cities in the Wichita metro area, we find that our 2024 fees are higher than Andover, Goddard, Derby, Mays, and Park City. Here's a table showing some of our current fees, we've got a lot of different types of cases, so I didn't include that entire table here, but just a small sample of some of the fees. Here's what they would look like with a 10% increase. We have two components to the fees, we have a flat filing fee, and then we have an acreage fee, which is applied against how many acres the subject site makes up, and you can see what would happen. So for instance, a zoning change to MF 18 up to in neighborhood retail would go from $900 to $990, the current acre fee would go from $30 to $35. And a quick note is that we also round up to the nearest $5, just for ease of transactions. When it comes to the subdivision side, here's an example, a one-step plat would go from $900 to $990, and the current lot fee would go from $20, would remain at $20. $900 to $990, and the current lot fee would go from $20, would remain at $20. In terms of the process, so the fees were approved as part of the adopted budgets back in 2024. Since that time, we've done a number of research and information gathering projects. We brought that back, consulted with staff on that one, and then took it out to stakeholders, and then brought it back to staff. And now we've got it scheduled here today for the B O C C's consideration. We will likewise plan on taking it to the City Council. We do not have that scheduled at this time. One note about this is that one of the stakeholders that we consulted with was WABA, and we did a presentation at one of their meetings. During that meeting, the feedback that we got is that, the general feedback that we got during the meeting was that they weren't real thrilled about the prospect of fee increases, but they could understand it. And that happened back in November. Last week, in talking with Representative of WABA, the representative indicated that WABA had done some internal consultations and discussions among members, and that they were no longer, that they were not in support, and they wanted to indicate that they were not in support of the fee increase. Today, I spoke with Representative from WABA just before this meeting, and they indicated that they would like to encourage a deferral of this item so that they can have more time to collect their final numbers for 2024. So that was the process. In terms of the recommended action, the recommended action is to authorize the fee increase and adopt the resolution. An additional consideration that because the city fees, fees for city cases also take city action, I'd like to suggest that it might be helpful that if any approval is done, that it would have an effective date of March 1st, in order to provide time for the city to consider a similar fee increase and for our staff to share information about any upcoming fee increases, both online and at our offices. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Scott, thank you. We were, had a discussion about this on Friday during agenda review. We also had briefings on Monday, I believe, with the Commission. I would let my colleagues know that I also had a conversation with Wes Gallion from WABA, who also made the request to me that we entertain a motion to defer. He'd like some more time with his membership and to look at some more data and to make a case for the Commissioners to consider. So, and he didn't say that he was even against this. He says that he needs more time and would like some more time. So I will likely be making a motion to defer, but want to open it up for comment. So Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. I would concur to defer. I don't have a problem with that, but I want to make sure that WABA understands that the bulk of the zoning cases that are worked are really not the developments. There are other things that happen, adding accessory apartments, a number of things like that. So really, I don't think it has as big an impact on his builders as he's worried about. In addition, even if you look at the numbers that were just presented to us, we're still subsidizing 70%, over 70% of the operations of M A P D. So we're going to reduce that a little bit, but not a whole lot. And I truly believe that our property taxpayers shouldn't be subsidizing a large portion of this operation. So I hope I won't be on the bench when this comes back, if we defer it. But I think it is important that we do pay attention to what property taxpayers are paying and make sure that we move the funding from the taxpayers over to the people that are using these services. So I will concur with the deferral, if that's what the wish is of the Commission, but I want to make sure that this moves through at the proper time. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the previous comments. You know, we talk about revenue to government, it's either done through general taxation to cover services we provide, or sometimes it's done through fees, and that's, I could pay for a direct service for the thing that's your, whatever part of government you're using. I think that this is more appropriate to be fee-based, and I think that's why it should be, but I'm a bit bothered by the three slides on Slides 16, 17, and 18. You're welcome to review those. I do appreciate your presentation this morning, but this indicates that for other communities, other counties, inside the state, outside the state, other regional counties, and even cities, they have lower rates than we do already. And I don't know why that is. And I guess one of the questions I had before was, do we know how much subsidy those communities are providing? I don't think we have an answer to that question yet, because I think what it hints at is whether or not we have an efficiency problem. I don't know what we do. I'm just saying, if other communities are providing these services for less cost, then maybe we should be taking a look at efficiencies within our processes here, to see maybe that's another way to solve the same problem. So I'm not so sure I'm ready to move forward without a little bit more data on that. I don't think 10% is unreasonable, considering it's been basically six years since this was adjusted. I think that that's reasonable based on inflation rates, and I think you have a slide that shows that. That's not unreasonable. But what is, my concern is, I guess, we don't, we don't have a good comparison right now for other communities doing the same type of rate increase. See, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I don't have a complete picture on that yet, but we do have some survey information from contacting other planning departments back in around 2023, 2022. And what we found from that survey was that in Wyandotte County, which is one of the counties that was consulted as part of our survey to find out where their fees are, they have a population of just around 160,000. They have 13 full-time staff members and two interns. That is in comparison to our department, which, we have the city of Wichita, which is 400,000 people, and a good chunk of the, and then the unincorporated county. And our department is 20 staff members plus one intern.
So, yeah, you know, so that would indicate that they probably have a higher subsidy than then.
I would imagine so.
Yeah, I just want to understand that better. The other thing I asked for then, the other day when we talked about this in a briefing we had, that I was wondering, I was wondering if someone could, using the proposed fee increase with maybe recent history, let's say 2024, number of cases that come before ME, before come before M A P C, and do a fiscal analysis to say, if we adopt this, here's how it's going to impact, I guess, the, you know, how, this is how it would change our fiscal relationship, whether it's this much subsidy or that much subsidy, based on a fiscal analysis of what's being proposed here. I don't think we've received that data yet that I'm aware of, but I did talk about that, and I think there was some intent to do some work on, on kind of analyzing it from that perspective.
I may have to get back with you on that one and just understand a little bit better to make sure that we're meeting your needs.
I'll wrap up my comments and just say, and I think a deferral is appropriate, but all I'm saying is, the proposed fees, based on the number of cases we had the same in the last year, use that as a, as an example of what a year might look like, apply those fees, and see what the difference would be at the end of the year in terms of, you know, how much subsidy change would that be at the end of the year with the fee increase?
Okay.
I just think we need to have some fiscal analysis to understand this a little bit deeper. So I do think a deferral is my preference today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I would just say, one of the things that I want to work through with WABA and with the Planning Department, we have some preliminary data. Inflation's up 20% for those that are home builders and building these houses. A lot of that's in labor and materials. We also want to better understand what is the, in that same time period, what is the median and average sales price of homes? If it's growing at the same clip, at a faster clip, if that margin is compressing, we obviously do not want to throw, we have a housing crisis in this community, we don't want to throw any more barriers into the capacity to build homes, and to build homes that fit the price points that this community needs. So those are just some of the discussions that we'll be having over the next couple months, to make sure we better understand. Anytime we talk about a fee increase, we obviously want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and make sure we fully understand it, so. Okay, any other questions for Scott? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, just a side comment. Scott, a few, thanks for the presentation and all the hard work, obviously, but if we're doing further deep-down analysis and comparables to other departments, it might be useful to find out how many cases they all serve a year.
Certainly, yes, sir.
Versus what? I think you certainly, I think you handle a lot, and we're in a growing community that others are jealous of with the number of applications for planning and growth. So maybe that's a component that we need to consider as well as we look at this. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments for Scott? Okay, Commissioners, I'll make a motion to defer this item and this resolution until a later date.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Scott, thank you, appreciate it. We'll get back with you. Okay, next item, please.
Item N, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on January 2nd, 2025.
Here's the most famous guy in Sedgwick County, Joe Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, the first meeting of the year, January 2nd, has one item for your approval, and that is the Adult Residential and Work Release Food Services for the Department of Corrections. Excuse me. This recommendation is to accept the negotiated proposal with Summit Food Service LLC. It's for the contracted price listed, and it's for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have on this item, and I recommend approval.
Okay, Commissioners, one item on the bid board. Any questions or comments for Joe? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on January 2nd, 2025.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We're going to pause and move into the Fire District meeting. Before we do that, I want to make an acknowledgement that former Commissioner Tim Norton and his wife Susan are here. We want to welcome you guys. We're glad you're joining us today. Always good to see Mr. and Mrs. Norton. Okay, we're going to pause Board of County Commission meeting. We're going to call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for Wednesday, January 8, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Nobody signed up for Public Agenda for the Fire District? Next item.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of December 4th, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, everyone was present for all three of these meetings. Any questions or comments? Any objection that I can bind all these into one motion? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of December 4th, 2024, December 11th, 2024, and December 18th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments, Item D, Accept the Resignation of Mike Strelow from the Sedgwick County Fire District One Steering Council.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you. Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor, this item would be to accept the resignation of Mike Strelow from the Sedgwick County Fire District Number One Steering Council. The recommended action is to accept that resignation.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions or comments? We appreciate all those. This Fire District Steering Council's been very useful. We've got, we do now have a few openings now on this, so we'll get an update as to what those openings are and what industries they represent, so we can get to work on filling them, so we can have a full council. Important work and important conversations happening there. We certainly appreciate the service that Mike Strelow was able to provide, and wishing best. So, that being said, I'll move to accept the resignation of Mike Strelow from the Fire District Number One Steering Council.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner, good morning. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Item E on the Fire Agenda today.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on the Consent Agenda for the Fire District? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the one item on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Commissioners, anything under other on the Fire District? Seeing none, next item, please.
Executive Session.
No executive session today for the Fire District, so we'll officially adjourn Fire District Number One, return ourselves back to the County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz again, recommend approval of Consent Items A, I'm sorry, N through double-letter AJ, with the exception of Z and A B. We'll bring those back, those two items back.
One second, please. Okay, Commissioners, as you heard, we're going to move to approve the Consent Agenda. We're excluding Items Z and Items A B. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll move to approve the Consent Agenda with the exclusion of Items Z and Items A B.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Okay, Commissioners, winding down. Any committee reports that you would like to share? Okay, seeing none, next item.
Other.
Okay, other. Today is a bittersweet day. It's a big day, as we are saying goodbye to a couple colleagues and winding up this session with this County Commission. We're going to take some time to honor our colleagues and just share some thoughts. So, that being said, we would like to share a video now to the public for Commissioner
Hi, I'm Sarah Lopez, Sedgwick County Commissioner for District Two.
When I think about Sarah and accomplishments, I really just think about her being the first Latina Commissioner. That's a big deal.
She brought in, if you will, a very fresh perspective. Her cultural connections, I think, were definitely needed here through County Commission.
I ran for office for my kids, and I wanted especially my daughters to see a woman that looks like them in some of these areas, and having a seat at these tables. And most important thing to me is just to make sure that I'm opening the door and making it easier for people to walk through.
You being in this position has shown me that anybody can take a role in government, including me.
So when I think of Sarah, I think about a trendsetter. I think about someone who established something, who set a mark and set and busted through some things that were previous barriers here, so I'm proud of her for that.
If you look at the two of us, we're kind of polar opposites. Very quickly, I learned that she is very bright, very hardworking, and we just kind of clicked. Well, I like little babies, so it was pretty cool when she had twins, and I got the whole one of them.
As my mom's first child, I've seen her grow up and go through a lot of different phases. I feel like the past four years, I've seen all of her hard work to come together, not I feel like the past four years, I've seen all of her hard work to come together, not only from the work she's doing right now, but the work she's been doing for years before this point in our lives.
I know Sarah as a loving wife and mother, and I think we were the luckiest people on earth in Cedric County to have her serving us as a Commissioner. She really got to work and made things happen, so that we're gonna see improvements and investments that we've never seen in this part of the county before.
We started working on the regional mental health facility. We needed to churn around the staffing in a lot of our organizations. She worked with us on a number of these really critical issues, and we got them solved. So, an incoming Commissioner doesn't have to worry about some things that were really critical.
Sarah's very good about not only being our Commissioner, but she was also good about being a parent in the district.
Sarah became very active, became the Vice President, and kind of had a very active role in what we were trying to accomplish with the Hazwell Education Foundation, which was raise money, obviously, and then give it to the schools for teacher innovation and helping students that maybe couldn't participate because of financial difficulties.
When people get elected locally, I've found, they really go to areas that they have passion about, and she had a lot of passion about Exploration Place and provided some great leadership there.
For the last four years, Sarah served on the Board of Trustees here at Exploration Place, and she's been a tremendous supporter and advocate for everything that we do as an organization in that town. And also, for the last three years, Sarah has served on the Steering Committee for EP2, and that's our big project to build a world-class playscape here. I feel that that's gonna be a big part of Sarah's legacy here at Exploration Place.
Sarah Lopez cares deeply about people, and her service in this community and working alongside her has deeply impacted me.
I know she's gonna do great going forward, so whatever she decides to do going forward, she'll be successful.
You know, when you've got a connection with the community and you're smart and you've got some business acumen, you can do a lot out in the community as public service without being an elected official.
This is only the beginning of all the amazing things that you will do. I love you.
Love you.
Sarah, we want to give you a gift. This is from your colleagues here and from all the staff here at Cedric County. Joe, very welcome. Very deserved. We'd also like to share some thoughts. Commissioner Meitzner.
Well, thank you. Since the Chair is a baseball guy, he asked me to be the leadoff hitter on this rather emotional day, Sarah. So, just a couple of thoughts and then I'll let others fill in some blanks, but you're, it's been a great knowing you and becoming friends, and I want to thank Brent and your family, great videos. Four years ago, met Joey and, of course, your new daughters, but, and great, great people, even though Joey's a Denver Bronco fan. That's all right, though. But it's all right. We all have our flaws. But your calm demeanor over these four years, your value, you're in a spot where, I think you've noticed, when Sarah Lopez says something at the bench, everybody kind of pays extra attention, because she doesn't talk often, but when she does, it's valuable, it's heartfelt, it's meaningful, and that's a great attribute that you have. You've got a, your contribution, Exploration Place was obviously, everybody knows, I think, what you've done there. It's fantastic, the State Mental Health Hospital. Another thing that most of you don't know, when we celebrate grants, awards in this community of two or three million, I know Evan, you're out there in the audience, in the community, GW, Greater Wichita Partnership, we get a two or three million dollar award. That's huge. Well, Sarah was an integral part, working with, closely with Wichita State University to get a fifty-one million dollar grant that covered twenty-seven counties related to the Build Back Better, emerging, pardon my, emerging technologies, precision manufacturing, and competitiveness and profitability in an eighteen-county or twenty-seven-county area. Wichita State's the leader in that, and it's gonna take us well into the future and modernize us in the manufacturing world, and Sarah Lopez was a, was a large, large piece of that victory. And I want to thank you for that, Sarah. So, as said, she's, you've had the State Mental Health Hospital, Exploration Place, and, and so you are not only paid attention to your district, but you had a vision for the whole community with Exploration Place and the whole state with the Build Back Better, and so your vision and your contribution is, is not just in the, in the, in your district. You're incredibly valuable asset for our, for our Commission, and you will, so I share that, that, that I know many comments from employees at departments and department leadership and just regular department employees, they will, they collectively extend a appreciation and a, and a, they're gonna miss you, and you're a good person on top of all of that. And so, with that, you'll be able to go on in life nicely, and you'll always be able to look back, and when you see things like the State Mental Health Hospital or, or the Exploration Place, when you see these things, you'll always be able to drive by them and know that, that you were a critical part of that. Those are buildings, but they are, and I don't know if they'll have your plaque or your name next to them, but, but you were a big part of that, and that'll be a life, life-changing for our, for our community, and you should be so proud of what you've done with that. So I want to thank you from, from my heart, and thanks for our friendship, and you will be missed. So, thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Four years ago, we were on the same election cycle, and I did not know Sarah. As a matter of fact, I was campaigning against Sarah. So, that was my mistake, okay? And I admit it. I did know her husband. He taught with me at North High School, so I knew him for a long time, but I honestly did not know Sarah. And it's been a revelation to me on what a great person that she is. As I said in the video, I would kind of polar opposites, and as a result of that, is it called Storytime, or what is it? Anyway, it's where that they get people that are, what's called?
Just record.
Story. It's a place where they get two people that are kind of opposite to sit down and talk to one another, and they record it, and you can call it up, it's online someplace. And as I said, we are kind of opposite. I'm an old white man, she's a young Hispanic female.
Really?
I didn't notice.
You didn't notice?
That's a revelation. She's a Democrat, I'm a Republican, and we're both Catholic, but as I got to know her, my respect grew daily, it honestly did. And I, some of the things that are important to me, and I've held dear all my life, are somebody that is truthful to me, that is honest and has integrity. And I measure my friendships by some of those measures, and the people that I really trust. And Sarah meets all those, and it's been a pleasure working with her for the past four years, and we've done a lot. Pete mentioned some of the things that are happening. The Regional Mental Health Hospital actually started working on that eight years ago when I first became a new Commissioner, and the sheriff came over and said, "We've got a serious problem. We can't get people into Larned, to, to the State Regional Mental Health Hospital. They get arrested, they go into the jail, they go to court. Once they get to court, the judge sends them back, says they need a mental health competency evaluation." At that time, we were really understaffed, and so he has to take two of his very valuable deputies out of the jail and send them to Larned, three-hour drive out, three-hour drive back, a few weeks later, send them back out to pick them up. He said, "We, we have to have a Regional Mental Health Hospital here." So we started lobbying for that a long time ago. It started getting closer and closer. At one of the meetings that Sarah and I were at with a number of the legislators, I probably stepped out ahead of what the Commission was going to agree to, but I said, "If you'll give us the money, we'll build the darn thing." And that's what happened. They gave us the money, and we have the expertise on our staff, we got Public Works, we got all of the people in Finance, we know how to do contracts, and we're building it. And that's a testament to the assistance that Sarah gave us. One of the things that I had an opportunity to do is go see what a regional biomed facility has, does, and I flew down to Phoenix to see what was going on there. And we needed a biomed facility here in Wichita. So as that meeting went on with Dr. Muma, I said, "Wow, we have a problem with, with staffing in places like our Calm Care Crisis Center." And what we looked at was, hey, if we could co-locate our Calm Care Crisis Center with them, we could use people that are going through college, getting a degree, to have hands-on experience right in our Calm Care Crisis Center. So, with Sarah's help, we bought the building right next to the biomed facility, and it's gonna be a perfect place for our Calm Care Crisis Center. Pete already mentioned the new playscapes at Exploration Place. These are some really transformational things that are happening to this area, and they, a lot of them affect our quality of life in so many ways, and the quality of life is important. We can try and hire people in, but if you can't keep them because there's no quality of life, we're gonna lose them and we're not gonna get ahead. So these are some of the things that Sarah helped us with over the last four years and made sure that they happen, and they're just now coming to fruition. And here in the near future, we're gonna see groundbreaking on a number of these different things. And it's all because of the foundation that Sarah put in place during her four years here. So, I proudly call her my friend now. I hope that we stay in touch as we both go our separate ways in the future, but she has been a true asset to Cedric County, and I thank her very much.
Commissioner Howe.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say a few things about Sarah that stand out to me. Number one, I want to say thank you for your service. This is not an easy job. Sarah poured herself into this, into this job. I don't know if you, don't know if you realize how much time this takes and how much, how much passion it takes to be a good Commissioner. She was a great Commissioner. And I say that sincerely. One thing about Sarah, and I, and I say this because I think she and I are opposite on this one thing, she's extremely popular. She's, and she's, well, and I'll say, she's also very, very well-liked by so many people. You know, I think about that term rock star, you know, she walks around, everybody knows who she is, they have a good opinion about her, and she is well-known in the community. You know why? Because she, she stands out. She is a true leader, and she has truly shattered the glass ceiling in so many different ways, and we are very proud of her. She, she leaves a legacy here at the County Commission and in this community. I know that there's been a few, there's not been that many, believe it or not, if you keep track, I keep track of this stuff, but there's really not that many split votes. Sarah and I find ourselves on different sides of a few issues, but I love having her balance on topics. And second of all, we were on the same side on a couple of really critical things, which I thought were, without her support, without her help, we would have never moved forward with fire pay the way we did. That was a very difficult topic at the time, and because of her support, we were able to move forward on that. I think, looking backwards, that was the right thing to do. Senior Centers is another one. It's been a passion of mine, and I know it's been a passion of hers as well. And there's a number of things like that I could, I could highlight that say that we would not have gotten these things done without her personal sincere work on those issues. And so, you leave a, you leave a legacy. You're not gonna be forgotten. We'll talk, we will talk about the things you've done here, really forever. So, you're a wonderful person, and I think no matter where you go from this point, you're gonna do very, very well, and I'm really glad that I had the chance to work with you for four years.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Sarah, when I, when I talk about you and I think about you, some words come to mind. You're tough, you're really tough. I think some people know, but not everybody knows, the day after she gave birth to twins, she joined a County Commission meeting. That's pretty tough. She is, she's full of grace. Even the times when we did fall on the opposite side of an issue, or the few times that she got mad at me, she, she did it with such incredible grace and dignity. She's the epitome of a public servant in so many ways, but not just, I've, I've, I've watched the way you've conducted yourself as a Commissioner, but I've watched the way you've conducted yourself as a mom, as a friend, as a, as a wife, and you epitomize grace in all that you do. When I think about you, I think of legacy. You are the first Latina Commissioner in Cedric County, Kansas. That's a big deal. That's a really big deal. You told me, one of the first times we met, the reason that you ran is that you wanted to leave this place better for your children than you found it. And I could tell you without a shadow of a doubt that you accomplished that. This place, this community, Cedric County, is a better place because of your influence, and you've done a hell of a job. You're a good Commissioner. And in this line of work, we're never promised other terms, we're never promised a future. But what we can manage, you've managed well, and what you managed and what you controlled was the way you conducted yourself and the way you handled yourself and the legacy that you left, and we are all beneficiaries of the legacy that Sarah Lopez left in this community. You are a fantastic person, you are a great friend. I am grateful that I've had the opportunity to serve for four years, and I'm excited, really, really excited to see the things that you're gonna do in the future. You will do big things. So, we are incredibly grateful for you. Congratulations on a successful term, and we're excited about what you have coming in the future. So, Sarah, would you like to say anything?
You guys have not made this easy, so thank you for the kind words. I will take those with me forever, so I appreciate that. I did write something down because I knew if I did, then I would ramble and nobody wants to see that. So, as I said here before you today, my heart is, is full of thankfulness and appreciation. Serving as a Cedric County Commissioner has been one of the greatest honors of my life, and while I wish I had the opportunity to finish some of the projects that were already mentioned, I'm leaving with just an overwhelming amount of gratitude. To the dedicated staff of Cedric County, you are the backbone of everything that we accomplish here. Your tireless efforts, professionalism, and commitment to public service have been nothing short of extraordinary to watch. You make a difference in countless lives every single day, and I am profoundly grateful that I've had the opportunity to serve alongside of you these last four years. To my colleagues on the Commission, thank you for your collaboration and the work that you do for this community, though we might not always agree on everything, as a couple of people have mentioned. I have the deepest amount of respect for each of you and the dedication and the unwavering belief that you hold for public service. Together, we've worked to address challenges, seize opportunities, and we've created a stronger future for Cedric County together. One of the most rewarding aspects of this journey has been the relationships that I've been able to build along the way. I am incredibly grateful for the lifelong friendships that I have made in my time and my experience here, friendships that were created through shared challenges, meaningful conversations, and shared commitment to our community. These connections will remain a cherished part of my life for the rest of my life. I want to thank my husband, my family, my children, thank you for your endless love and support. The demands of this role are not always easy, and that meant I had to miss a lot of our moments, between soccer games, football games, swim meets, band concerts, and so many other family events. But your sacrifices allowed me to serve our community, and I will be forever grateful for your understanding and your patience. You have been my rock, my inspiration, and my reason to strive for a better future for all of the families in Cedric County. As I step away from this role, I will do so with a sense of pride in what we have accomplished together. We have faced challenges with determination, we've celebrated progress with humility, and always kept the well-being of our community at the forefront in every vote that we've taken. I would like to just mention to all the young Latinas that are watching today, regardless of who you are, what you look like, or where you come from, you have the power to make a difference. You can lead, you can inspire, and you can create the change that you want to see in this world, and I hope that my time on the Commission shows you that anything is possible. My commitment to Cedric County will remain steady. I will look forward to continuing to find other ways to contribute, and so from the bottom of my heart, I am just so thankful for this incredible journey. So thank you all very much for being here.
Commissioner Lopez, we appreciate you. Before we move on, I want to acknowledge we have another mayor that has joined us, Mayor Lilly Wu from City of Wichita is also here today. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're still another. Commissioner Dennis, we'd like to share a video with you. First impressions of David was he was very professional, very to the point, doesn't pull a lot of punches.
I was actually kind of afraid of David, to be perfectly honest. Our relationship probably started after my relationship with everybody else, and it took a little bit longer to build, but it's been also like the most meaningful relationship that I've made while I've been here.
We can call him Colonel, we can call him Teacher, we can call him Board of Education Member, we can call him Commissioner, there's season we called him Chairman. All of those things uniquely fit him.
I graduated from college when I was twenty-one years old, and it was during the Vietnam War. Figured I'd enlist in the Air Force, I'd serve four years, get out, and then have a life after that, and it didn't happen quite that way.
Well, my name is David Dennis also. I'm his oldest son. His military service, I mean, he served for almost thirty years in the Air Force. He was primarily what they call a missileer. So, in service, he maintained, he targeted missiles, he was a launch control officer and evaluator in there, and then he finished off his career actually dismantling the weapons systems of the Soviet Union.
We moved fourteen times in twenty-nine years. So my wife, she's a hero, actually, because she had to take care of the family while I was gone.
I used to tell people, by the time I was eighteen, I saw more things and done more stuff before most people forty, fifty, sixty years old.
I retired from the Air Force in nineteen ninety-seven, I was full Colonel, so I had a Teacher's Certificate coming out of college, and that was one of the jobs I always thought that I might be interested in doing.
I'm Sherman Paget, and I was blessed to be David's boss, his principal at North High School for, oh, probably five or six years. And when I got, first met him, he was a Department Chair of our Business Department at North, a great impact on that department, great leadership for that department, did a great job teaching, kids loved him. Maybe a couple of years after I'd been there, we hired his son to work with us, too. And they worked together at, like, sporting events, they were like announcers for the games.
My goal is how do I get kids to graduate? So there's a couple of programs. Sports is one way of doing that. Sports is one way of doing that and JROTC is another way. So those two programs I got involved in so that we could connect the kids to school and get them to graduate. He retired at North and I moved over to Northwest High School as the athletic director. I was able to get him to come over and be the voice of the Grizzlies. He makes a great atmosphere for our fans and our athletes. Eight years ago, I became Commissioner. It's been a great ride, honestly. It's the people you work with that makes it great.
We've worked a lot together, but we got to speak and talk to state legislators and really advocate for the state mental health hospital, which is something I'm really proud of and I'm glad that we were able to work on it together.
David cares deeply about his district. His district is unique geographically. So he really forced the conversation on needed infrastructure and roads.
When he has a passion about something, it kind of can come out. Let's say the zoo, for instance. If we headed his way, we would no longer be the air capital of the world, we'd be the elephant capital of the country. Best of luck, thanks for all you do, and thank you for your services is a true statement for David Dennis.
What I like about David is that he's willing to let each issue essentially stand alone. It's not personal and we can disagree on an issue and be professional about that and then work together on the very next thing. But what I really like about David most of all is his love for veterans and all things related to veterans.
What's next? He's not good. I don't think he knows what retirement is.
I do not have a job lined up, but yeah, you know, I've got two Corvettes, I've got a Harley motorcycle. I like things to go fast, make noise.
We've restored many Corvettes, we've done a 62, a 63, a 65. Helped me with my 71 and that's probably another thing we'll probably do more of.
I don't know what I'll do next. I will stay busy, I'll tell you that, because I just can't sit around. That's not my nature.
Commissioner Dennis? We have a gift for you, sir.
David Dennis, Sedgwick County Commission, 2017-2025. Thank you for your dedicated service to the Cedric County Commission, community, and the residents of District 3. Your someday is finally here. Retirement is when you stop living at work and start working at living. Thank you.
That's good. Very good. That's nice. We'd like to share a few thoughts, Commissioner, if that's okay with you. Commissioner Meister?
A little batting leadoff again, David. Congratulations on all you've done. Communications Department, you did a great job in your resume. It pales in comparison to any of us even combined. Your contribution to your city, the county, your state, your country, your schools, it's everything. And Janet, I'm glad you're here. You've been on a long journey. How many years you guys been married?
56.
So it's really difficult to just isolate one thing, but meeting you before I was here and actually before you came on was a joy to understand that we may be bringing into our community a person with your resume and your background, your leadership, your integrity, all these things that we all like to put on palm cards, but you're actually that person. So I just want to sincerely thank the impact you've had, working with all these commissioners in the past, and just your contribution. Our friendship is so fun to stop by his office. He comes in, he, once in a while, he beats me into the office in the mornings.
All the time.
Carol, Lisa, you can come, you know. All right, well, the silver medal's not all that bad. But gosh, thank you. I've always enjoyed our visits. It's wonderful, it's smart, intelligent, and you bring to me some experience. And now I guess I will be the senior statesman, but I don't think I can hold a candle to the value that you brought. Commissioner Alex Stephanie Wise, are you, you got this kind of resume? You want to come in here and sit in this chair? I know, big shoes, but you'll do well. And Tim, thanks for serving with Tim Norton, thanks for serving with David. And it's just been, it's been a joy. So thank you, best of luck. Janet, and you, thank you to your family.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I just want to thank you first and foremost. When I think about what public service looks like, you are quite literally the definition from country to state to Cedric County to your students. I don't know how anybody can do more than that. And so just thank you for what you have done and what you have given and what you have dedicated your whole life to is giving back. I also personally just want to say that you give me hope, our relationship gives me hope that it doesn't have to be us versus them. Politics is not something I necessarily enjoyed. It wasn't political before I got into this role and I'm certainly not political now coming out of it. But what I cared about was service to this community. And not everybody can look past the labels that you come with sometimes. And that makes this role really hard, because no matter what I did, I was labeled as this instead of what we were all here to do. You never did that. You never put me in that box. And you mentioned earlier that we are opposite. And so when we went places, you were chair and I was vice chair, we served a lot of time together. We were in every meeting together. We went all over. We traveled to Texas together. We've done a lot of things. And so we did get really close. And one of the things that I think has been a lot of fun is watching the reaction of other people when they see how close we are. When they know that my girl spent some time here, that, you know, if something was going on, Grandpa David comes over and checks on us. You know what I mean? Like we have that friendship beyond what this job is. And so more than just the relationship we've built, you've given me hope that it doesn't have to be the way it seems to be so much in times in politics. And so I am deeply appreciative of that from you. I never in a million years would have thought I would have a mentor of your caliber in my lifetime. And wherever I go next and what I do with my life, you will have a big impact on that because you have shown me what leadership looks like, what it can look like, what it should look like. And so I am just unbelievably grateful to you. And so I am, yes, I hope our friendship continues and I am just so appreciative. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak on this one as well. You know, I, let me tell you just a quick story. You know, when Commissioner Dennis was first elected, looking backwards at the politics of that particular race, it wasn't very good. At the end of that race, it was, you know, there's a victor and there's the aftermath. And sometimes when you change from one person to the next in a seat, things are, the transition can be difficult. Commissioner Dennis reached out to his opponent in that race and they had, I don't know how many meetings. From my perspective, it seemed like about a dozen meetings, where they would sit in the office for long periods of time and essentially they worked together. And it was really nice to see two people who were maybe against each other politically being able to sit down together and work things out. So Commissioner Dennis, this just demonstrates your, it demonstrates your ability to sit down with someone who maybe for some reason, there's something about that situation that's not ideal, but you can still sit down as a gentleman, as a professional, and talk about the issues that are so important. And that really demonstrates his character. You know, I would say, if leadership is in your DNA, he's got it. Every time he does anything, he becomes a leader in so many different roles. One thing I really like about David is he remembers details. He can recite numbers from things we heard years ago. And I check him, you know what? He's right. I forget sometimes the details, but David doesn't seem to forget those details. He's got a great memory in that regard. And no offense to Commissioner Meister, but I do, I would say that Commissioner Dennis is the hardest working commissioner. And I mean that because, again, I live further out. I don't know what gets David here so early. I usually do things in the morning, but I show up here sometimes at 10 o'clock, sometimes at 9 o'clock, sometimes a little earlier. I used to be here a little earlier, but almost without exception, David's always here. He's in the office working. He's on the phone, he's making, he's doing emails, he's making phone calls. I think that he sets a good example on how a commissioner should be, help, you know, to be connected to your constituents. He, and he prides himself in this and he should, by the way. He always returns phone calls and he always writes emails back, without exception. And I think it's hard to do that. Sometimes I think, I want to think about that for a little while and maybe I'll forget about it, you know? But David doesn't do that. He always answers every phone call and every email. And I would say, you know, he is very sacrificial. He gives of himself, not just, you know, he doesn't need this job. It's not about the money for him in any way. It's about the service. And we know he's here because he wants to make Cedric County a better place. And I just want to say that he is very sacrificial with his time, talent, and treasure. And I would just say, if I was going to characterize him with one more thing, I'd say he's a pragmatic conservative. He and I talk about conservative values all the time, but he kind of, he grounds me a little bit because he is able to think about things in a different perspective that sometimes I miss it. And that conversation's very useful to me, to have some pragmatic analysis on what we're trying to accomplish here in Sedgwick County. And then finally, it hasn't been said enough, but David and I are the only veterans here on this commission and I think we have a special bond because of that. And David has been a true leader in this community when it comes to veterans' issues. He will be at every single event. If there's a veterans' issue in this community, David is all in. And I know he's going to spend more time in the American Legion or VFW, I think American Legion, I'm not sure what exactly his plans are there, but he's got his veterans' jacket ready to go, his vest, and he's got his hat and he's already engaging how to be a leader in that organization. So just hang on. I think he'll have more ways to serve going forward. But he is a really great veteran. His military service is distinguished and special. I served for five years in the Air Force and I am a veteran and I look back with great memories of what I was able to do in those five years. David served for nearly three decades in the military. He was over there in Russia disarming nuclear weapons. But think about what that means to the history of this country. David was there. He was in the trenches doing things, away from his family.
That's right.
And so that was not easy to do that. So David has a tremendous veterans' history and I'm so proud of him for that. And he looks at veterans today here and he sees ways of helping people that are veterans especially. A great love in his heart for veterans and I have to just tell you, that really stands out to me. You're excellent when it comes to helping veterans. And so he's going to be missed. And again, he has left a huge legacy, a mark on this commission. He's done a tremendous amount of things, gotten things done. He will never be forgotten. You are leaving a legacy here today and I am so proud that I got the chance to serve with you for eight years.
Commissioner Dennis, there's a saying that you'll know people by their fruits. When you look at their life, you see the fruit of their life and you can tell a lot about that individual. And when we look at your life, your career in the military, your career as an educator, as a commissioner, there are no marks against you. You've served and you've served well in everything you've done. And when you look at your family and you see the way you treat your wife and your children and you talk about the way you treat other people, your colleagues, and what most people see is they see what takes place here, but they don't see what happens on the sixth floor in the office. And I promise you, David Dennis is a tender man. He's got a very tender heart. I've been on the other side of a David Dennis stare a time or two. And it is a bit intimidating. But you know what? It's all about business. And then when we get back to the sixth floor, he'll come in the office and talk about his Corvette and talk about what he's doing later. And it's just, this is about the business of the community, but he never lets the business get in the way of respect and dignity and honor. And that's not easy to do. And sir, you have done it so well. We call you Colonel, we call you teacher, we call you Commissioner. I'm delighted, sir, that I get to call you friend. You're a good man. You're a good man with quite a legacy. We talk about legacy, we talk about the things that you've contended for in your district. Your district is going to leave a big mark. What you've done in that district from roads and the zoo and you're going to stay on the zoo board. We're going to name some exhibits after you. In fact, the zoo, the zoo loves you quite a bit. I know, I see Cheryl Wolford up here as well. So in fact, the zoo sends a message about the
Maybe we'll call it the David Dennis Zoo Exhibit.
It's fitting. It's fitting. Commissioner Dennis, we love you, sir. We're grateful for you. Would you like anything you'd like to say?
Well, thanks, everyone, for being here today. I sincerely appreciate it. Mayor, thank you for taking time out of your schedule. Tim, thank you all. I've got a lot of my car guys in the audience, because that's near and dear to my heart. JROTC is another thing that I am a strong supporter of because JROTC connects the kids to the school. And if you connect them to the school, you're going to keep them in the school and you're going to get them to graduate and that's important. So there's a lot of people in this audience that I need to thank. I'm not going to be able to thank everyone personally. I hate to say that. When I ask my wife what I ought to say, she says, whatever you say, keep it short. So to keep it short, I did write it out. I know I've got, also, I should have mentioned, I've got a couple of members of my Citizens' Advisory Board in the office, in the audience. Thank you. I have much to be thankful for. First, I learned much from each of the other commissioners that I served with, including Commissioner Dave Unruh, Pete Meister, Michael O'Donnell, Dalton Glasscock, Sarah Lopez, Richard Ranzow, Lacey Cruz, Ryan Beatty, and Jim Howell. They're all great public servants. I also want to thank all the other electeds that I've had the chance to work with, including Sheriff Jeff Easter, District Attorney Mark Bennett, Treasurer Brandy Bailey, Register Deech, Tanya Buckingham, County Clerk Kelly Arnold, all the judges, the township offices, and each of the appointed officials that we've worked with over the years. A special thanks, and I try and do this as often as possible, to our great staff. With over 40 departments, commissioners cannot know everything. Our staff provides the expertise for us to make, in some cases, very difficult policy decisions. I truly appreciate our leadership team, especially Tom Stoltz, and each staff member who chose to serve our community. A heartfelt thanks to my Secretaries, Lisa, Carol, and Linda. Thanks to my campaign staff and all those who contributed to my campaigns. I wouldn't have been here as a commissioner without each and every one of you. Thank you. I have been blessed and I thank God every day for those blessings. Starting with my parents, Colonel DT and Virginia Dennis, my sixth sister Carolyn Thompson, my brother Danny Dennis. They gave me a great start in life, instilling the values that I hold dear today. My wife Janet is a special blessing. I met her in high school. We dated for over five years and married 56 years ago. She's been my foundation. She had to move our family 14 times over 29 years of military service and take care of our family during my frequent absences. She gave me two great sons. David, who gave us three grandchildren. Brittany, who then gave us two fantastic great-grandchildren, Christopher and Cecilia. Amanda, who was just married last Saturday. Devon, who we have a pleasure to see almost every day. And my other son Eric, who's given us two fantastic grandchildren with William and Elizabeth. I also thank God for giving me the health and leadership ability to serve our nation, our state, our county, schools, and city for over five decades. It's been an honor to serve the citizens of Sedgwick County, especially those in District 3. And if you get my newsletters, that's the last thing I put in every newsletter for the last eight years. I wish the new county commission the best. It's a tough job. They'll do a great job. They'll do a great job. Best advice that I can give to them is stay humble. Again, thanks to the entire Sedgwick County staff, you do a great job. Finally, I want to tell you a short story and then read a poem that's had a great impact on my life. You heard that I worked in the former Soviet Union for three years. It's tough to go to church, and I try and go to church over there, but it was there very difficult, because there's not a lot of Catholic churches in the former Soviet Union. And I actually went to a lot of Orthodox services while I was there. One, probably the most beautiful, was an Easter vigil. It started at midnight over there, and their Easter was a week after ours. So whenever I could get back to one of the capitals of Russia, Ukraine, Kazakhstan, or Belarus, they usually had a Catholic mass in a cafeteria or someplace like that that I could attend. And so the very last Sunday that I was over there, I was going to fly out during that coming week, and I had a diplomatic passport, so I had access to the embassies. If you travel over on your personal passport, you won't be able to walk into an embassy. But, so I went over to a Catholic mass the last Sunday I was there in Moscow, and at the end of the mass, I, the priest read a poem. And I said, wow, that really struck me. And so at the end of the, of the mass, as we were leaving, I stopped by to see the priest and shook his hand and wished him well, because he was leaving. And so I said, could I get a copy of that? And so he reached in his pocket, and he pulled out this piece of paper that was obviously written on, typed on some cheap Russian paper, and with an old typewriter, most of you don't know what I'm talking about on that. Some of those old typewriters, if you hit an O too hard, it would poke a hole through the paper, or you hit a period, it'd poke a hole through the paper. Well, this piece of paper had a lot of holes in it, okay? But the message was there. And so I'd like to read that as my final part, parting. And Lisa and Carol each got a copy of this when they were leaving, and I'm going to hand this to Sarah as I, as I finish up today. But it's called "On the Edge of Time" by Martha Edens. Between the known of my past, people I can hardly bear to leave behind, a job I know exactly how to handle, a home that is nest of security, and the vast unknown of the future ahead, people to work with and live with whom I need to learn to love and trust. Why do I feel I must go through this door? Because God calls me. All these years, I prayed that I could serve Him in whatever I did. Now He has opened this new door for this new phase in my life. So I must go, risking, sacrificing, leaving behind, crying, I must go. As I grew in my relationship with God, I finally had the courage to say, take my life and do with it what you will do. Now He has opened this new door, so I must go. Expecting, hoping, adventuring, trusting, I must go. How in the world will I manage? Because I can believe. Believing in God, whose will is wholeness, believing in Christ, who will guide me on the journey, believing in the Holy Spirit, who gives each of us the power to do more than we can believe or dare to ask. Believing all this, I step across the edge of time, through the door into the future, on my journey to wholeness in Christ. Thank you, everyone.
Wow. Very good. Very nice. Thank you both. Thank you for the patience, and thank you for the contributions on today. We wanted to honor our colleagues on their last meeting here. So thank you again for everything. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
We have no executive session today. So that being said, I'll officially adjourn this meeting. God bless you.